Thank you, Councilmember Dowhouse. Much appreciated. On what we have tonight, we have scheduled a presentation by Weaver Communities that Care. Valen, then I'm just gonna give us a presentation. We appreciate you coming and being with us, bringing Julie with us. It's like a team there. So, all right.
I'm always excited that I have Julie on my team. It's a big win for me. So, um, thank you so much for the time that you've given us today. I promise I'll be brief. Um, presentation feels a little bit more. This is really an invitation. So, um, Weaver Communities that Care has a key leader training coming up next Wednesday. So, we from tomorrow. So, I know it is kind of a short turnaround. Um, I have heard that you guys may have received an invitation to those in your inboxes at some point, but wanted to also make sure that we extended on one of these invitations to you in person. Um, the opportunity permitting itself as soon to today. So, um, as just a quick reminder, um, Weaver CTC focuses on substance use prevention and suicide prevention in our community. So, we're not Weaver County where Weaver Cone going to Weaver High School. So, that's our geographic area, right? And so, we're really trying to engage with our leaders that are really close in our local community, right? And so, that's why, um, we're hoping to hold this training. By the end of the training, we hope that anybody that attends feels that they have a better idea of what exactly a key leader is, what's your role? How do you fit into Weaver CTC? What's the Weaver CTC process is? And basically, how do we make our decisions? How do we decide what we're doing, not what, you know, what we're not doing? And who's involved, who's not involved, things like that? And then, um, also kind of share with you what we've been up to and what we plan for the future and get your input on different things that are going on in this community that you serve every day. So, um, with that being said, I don't know if any of you have any questions for Julie or myself, or if you'd like add anything to Julie. We're really excited because Julie's our new community board chair. So, we're really, really excited. That was a change in the last little bit. I'm so excited to have her on board with that. So, anyway, um, do you guys have any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Madam? I think we're pretty familiar with what you guys do and it's awesome work. And know that we support both of your focuses of substance abuse. Not paying substance abuse.
Thank you.
That's on suicide prevention. You know, those are big issues in our community. And so, hopefully, we do support that. I'm sure we can do the help.
Absolutely. Um, if it's all right, I am going to come up with these little paper ones. So, if you want to be able to check your calendar, have that information for you, um, then Julie and I will kind of divide and conquer. So.
Congratulations to Julie on your new board position. Great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, when I do have a question, for instance, can some of the staff, uh, like our city administrator, city manager, human resource director attend?
Absolutely. We would actually really, really love for the city manager or human resource manager, um, anybody in the admin. I mean, you guys really have a really good idea of what's going on too. So, um, perhaps even more so. But, yeah, so anyone, honestly too, if you look at this invitation and have heard what we're saying and you have a different person in mind, we understand you guys are very busy people. So, if automatically somebody else comes to your mind that you're like, oh, this is a really, this is a key leader in our community. I feel free to pass along this invitation on behalf of Weaver CTC. If you feel that that is a person within this office, within a different office that you're involved in, um, we're just looking for people who live and/or work and spend a lot of time in the Weaver Cone site. So, North Ogden, doesn't view Harrisville in the Valley. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And congratulations again, Julie.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, let's continue on with our agenda, moving into our consent agenda. Are there any conflicts of interest that we're going to address, actual or received, seen on the agenda? See, we had shaking also. We'll move on to item number three. Um, this is to approve the August 16th, 2022 City Council meeting minutes. Any corrections on those?
Mayor, we accept the, um, minutes for August 16th, 2022.
All right, we have a motion to accept the minutes of the August 16th, 2022 City Council meeting. Motion by Councilmember Dowhouse. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dowhouse. Is there any further discussion on the issue? All right, seeing that all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we can pass it to you now and see. Now, move into our active agenda. We'll start with public comments. Uh, just a reminder to the public, but this is the time to speak about items that are on the agenda. And just a reminder, it was brought to my attention, probably a good thing to remind the public. Uh, when you go out and you look at the agenda, you can click on that, see the attachments. Uh, that'll give you some insight to items that are going to be discussed, recommendations from staff and things of that nature. Uh, in preparation with public comments. So, at this point in time, we would open the meeting for public comments with a reminder to state your name and if you're a resident of North Ogden. And please limit your comments to no more than five minutes. That way, you make it, uh, you'll make it uncomfortable for the mayor to interrupt yourself. But that, if you'd like to make comments, please step up to the podium and say your name and if you're a resident of Ogden.
Counsel, it's, uh, it's good to be with you tonight. My name is Brad D. And I am a resident from North Ogden. We just recently moved in and built a new home upon 3825 and 551 East. And in the building of that home, obviously, we built it through a tough time. It's been over a year and a half. But we're in. And the concerns we have now is obviously, you know, I think I visited with some of you, is the way I can actually achieve meeting the ordinance now. And the mayor and I know that I served as mayor for 10 years in another city. And so, I understand how important these ordinances are. And I'm not arguing that about the ordinance. What I'm trying to accomplish is how to meet the parameters of good neighbors and at the same time keeping my retaining wall, which is cement and not rock, to the height of eight feet in the back of my yard. I have a picture here that has the particular wall, and I've been told, mayor, can I give it to you? And I've been asked, and I've been told that the structure of the wall is not an issue because we had two engineers and we put more rebar in there than you can imagine. We've got every 20 feet, we have a dead man that goes back about eight feet. So, that wall is going to stay there through most innings, including earthquake floods and things of that nature, hopefully. So, the one I, the one I've been working with the city on is aesthetics. How does it look? You can't see a heck of a lot of the wall, but it's there and it's over eight feet. So, I was, I was thinking about, do I bury it over the top of the wall with dirt? I have about two and a half feet on the opposite side of the wall that I could build dirt upon. But that approach, and you all understand that the people that take the brunt of retaining walls and especially rock walls are the least likely, the people that, who's have to look at it from their backyard, not the people that are on the top. So, in deference to my neighbors, I'm trying to do exactly what they would like to do. And in both cases, and I think you'll hear from one of them tonight, they would not like me to bury it with dirt on the back of their yard to grow weeds and other things. That leaves me the opportunity to put boulders back there and build it up for about three feet. Like boulders are where most of the vermin's go and the weeds go. And I have pictures from all over the city, and I'm not going to bore you with those. But you can imagine what some of these rock walls look like when they're not kept up. And rather than try to put a rock wall there, the neighbors and I have some really good exciting things about foliage and pushing bushes out high on the wall and doing some thing with green foliage, some of the regrat wheatgrass bushes that come up or lilacs, you know, Christie is really into some other bushes that she wants to put on her back wall. I just, um, again, you'll hear from one of the neighbors tonight that they're not interested in me and trying to bury that with dirt or rocks on top of the dirt and creating additional landscape problems for them. I would love to reach ordinance. I still have some questions on some other areas in the city that do not and in fact, recently built, very recently built, that are in somewhat the same situation as I am, but are still that high and no one's done anything about it. But I'd be willing to do anything that we need to do to meet that parameter. And I'd like to keep good neighbors too, at the same time, so I don't dump rocks on their property or dirt on their property. So, what I'm asking is, would you consider foliage? And I'm willing to plant whatever foliage my neighbors would like. And together, we will cover that, the bottom of that wall for three feet or whatever with foliage. And from the street, you can't see it very well, but with the green on the bottom of that wall, I think it will easily reach the, I'll reach the eight foot height and be in. But the ordinance shall be fine. So, do you have any questions? I'm sorry, I'm through, but.
Do you have any questions for Mr. D on this?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I hope council members, everyone, you not mind me putting in a question for Bill Barker Park.
No, not at all.
Great. Uh, we have another, um, community project this Saturday. We are meeting at eight o'clock in the morning. We'll be there from eight until 11:00. We're going to be planting wildflowers this week. So, we have some areas ready for wildflowers. We probably have some areas that still need a little work before we get the wildflowers in. But we invite all of you to come out and, um, enjoy a beautiful fall morning with us to plant some wildflowers and to get some more areas ready. Uh, it'll be at Barker Park behind the amphitheater and hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Chris Pulver, North Ogden City. I am the lead work guy for Mr. D's wall. Um, anyways, Ben, you come up kind of a fixture at the planning commission based on this, but just my interest in everything and especially coming to this council meeting as well. Um, so I guess the biggest things I just want to put in front of you before you make a decision on that. There's a few things, but the first thing is the wall height, which being an engineer, I understand that you can build a wall as high as you want, as long as you structure it correctly. Uh, I've watched, it's been a long time building for the footing, et cetera, et cetera, from waiting for the cement. So, I've seen every part of what they've been doing and 100% don't have any issues with structure. Um, coming to understand the process of eight foot rule, um, understand that, you know, you have to have a code that comes up with something. You gotta pick, you gotta pick a height. Um, and the planning commission has gone through a whole bunch of research, as you noted in their, in their submission, that eight foot is what everybody says. So, and we were applying that to not just cement walls, rock walls, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think that's the biggest thing right now is the heights. I think everybody's kind of focused on that. The definition of the height is often an interesting thing where it's finished height versus finished height, which means that Mr. D could technically have his finished height, eight feet. Wall extends four feet higher than that and still meet the code. So, I mean, there's always these little small things in the code that are still sitting there. Um, but from my point of view, no, I don't want rocks, um, maybe painted brown. I mean, there's a whole bunch of different things, but he was integral. I'm like 70% of his wall. Um, and it is, I smile every time I see it. Some of the planning commissions like, you're insane. But no, I've lived through a lot of the rock walls, some of the other things that degrade, vermin's, snakes, spiders, et cetera. Um, so I really thoroughly enjoy what is there. Um, and I know there, there's exceptions to everything, but you can't let a city go and base an exception. So, I know your guys' decision is tough, but from my point of view, I'd like to keep it as is. And that's it. Thanks.
John, do we have anyone online that would like to comment? Any further comments from the public?
Reid Miller from North Ogden. Hey, I just returned from a trip along IA to Des Moines, Iowa. And I stayed there for two weeks and coming back, I was appalled at the price of gasoline here in Utah, especially here in, in North Ogden. See, it was $3.59 all along the way and coming home. And here it is, $4.05. Now, it's $4.19. Uh, is there any way for the city, county, state, reduce it? I mean, that's 40 cents a gallon more than our neighbors. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
All right, we'll move on then to item number five, which is a discussion or action to consider ordinance to revise retaining wall standards, uh, which includes adding clarifying language, grading and drinking standards. Uh, presenter will be Scott Heser, planning director. I also see the chairman of our planning commission here. We may call upon him at some time. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So, we have a two-part ordinance for your consideration tonight. Both parts have held individual public hearings and then have been combined into a single item for the council's discussion. This is generally on, on retaining walls and in that section of the code on retaining walls. And I'm going to jump to the first part of it, the easy part first, which is some additional engineering requirements or recommendations that were made by the city engineer that the planning commission considered and unanimously accepted, um, and agreed and after pulling a brief public hearing. So, uh, we have a few instances in the city up on the hillside where you've got homes that are kind of dug into and built into three-sided retaining walls. You can picture that in the rear of the yard and the two side yards are kind of surrounded by retaining walls. Um, one of these was a, a gravity rock wall, a series of gravity rock walls. And city engineer noted in reviewing those walls that, um, if there was a finished basement, it had a high likelihood in a failure situation of life safety accident. Basically, it's possible for some of those rock walls to fail and enter a basement. If that's a basement bedroom, you've got a situation there where you're, as a homeowner, really high liability situation. Doesn't make the wall illegal. It doesn't make the wall any more or less safe than any other tiered rock wall or retaining wall in the city. Uh, it's just basically, you know, individual cases at times are going to require a little higher level of, of engineering and, and support in those. And, and so, the recommendation that city engineer is that on the city engineer's recommendation, additional risk analysis be done on some of these walls. And I think that's reasonable, this is to be applied to every and any individual wall that goes up, but really those that represent a higher loss to land or property. Yeah.
Scott, I know we've had this discussion before of having an individual with kind of leeway just to make that decision objectively. Uh, would there be a definition of what would comprise that life safety standard so that we have a consistent application?
I can ask, but I'd rather have our city engineer tell us than me make something up on the spot.
Thanks for the opportunity. Um, yeah, so these walls that, that we would, um, have this extra engineering down or would be adjacent to the, to like a bedroom or some sort of dwelling area that would have occupancy of eight hours, like kind of overnight, um, that would have a higher risk of, if the wall were to fail it at night or a certain time, that it would, could cause loss of life.
But we will have as a definition what would cause the additional risk analysis. So, it's just not subjectively.
Yes, yes, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, Scott? No, you're good. So, that's, that's portion one that's built into the ordinance recommendation tonight. And John has that language here. Additional engineering may require a risk analysis. If the wall were to fail, risk analysis is to determine the potential loss of life or property damage. Uh, the second piece is the, the council had asked the planning commission to consider overall heights of walls. Planning commission held public hearing on that on the 21st of last month. And staff did what we do with really all of these ordinance regulations or ordinance changes to make a, and recommendation is we look at what peer communities are doing, we look at other, other areas are doing, and we kind of use that as a gauge to see whether or not we're being fair and equitable in applying the rules and regulations. So, in doing that, we tried to look at other hillside communities. We've produced some ordinances for you for your consideration. And staff determined that eight feet as a maximum visible wall height or essentially from average grade at the top of a wall as eight feet vertically showing is a reasonable standard. And it's not one that, that we're being overly burdensome or less burdensome on. Um, one thing that, you know, every city is a little bit different. Draper, for instance, allows a nine-foot wall and you can do that twice. You can get to a total of 18 feet tall in a wall, you know, tiered wall system. For North Ogden, in talking to Eric, we would permit three stacked eight-foot walls. So, you could technically get to 24 feet. There's some spacing requirements there. Uh, but it was determined by the planning commission that eight feet seems to be a reasonable standard. And then actually considered for our gravity, gravity rock walls, which are required to be engineered over four feet tall, currently are limited to six feet in height maximum, that the same standard should be able to be applied to those to go up to eight feet. And, and in addition to the onesie, twosie vertical walls that we've dealt with in the last year and a half while I've been here, that have been taller than eight feet, what we really have dealt with are a lot of those questionably taller than six-foot gravity rock walls that end up being seven or eight feet in order to retain a walkway to a front door on a side hill sloped property or something like that. So, uh, planning commission determined that applying eight feet to any wall that would still need to be engineered and installed correctly and have any of the drainage and French drains and all of that installed just the same, but that, that standard be applied uniformly as eight feet tall. And that's what in the recommendation tonight from planning commission for the council's consideration is uh, not to increase the height of any vertical wall systems or structures to include concrete or block or other mechanical stabilized earth walls. These aren't like your Home Depot blocks, but rather the ones that look like great big concrete Lego blocks that are engineered solutions. Um, remain, you know, those remaining are eight feet and then also to have the gravity rock walls at eight feet.
Okay, so just for clarification, if I get to consult here the question. You talked about visible eight feet.
Yeah, I looked at Mr. D.
Looking for a definition of what that means. I mean, is it foliage or what's that? I think that's the issue is kind of the undefined terms of what that means.
So, the, the ordinance states measurement of height for following rules. Wall heights are measured from the finished grade below the wall or wall system. So, a wall technically, even a gravity rock wall, has to bury some amount of that bottom boulder as like the foot, the toe of the wall essentially holding it into the ground. For a concrete wall, that needs frost protection of a standard footing, 30 inches deep. So, from the dirt, you can see there should be at least 30 inches of concrete buried in the ground just for frost protection in, in any footing. And then it's measured from that finished grade to the finished grade above the wall or wall system. So, to Chris Pulver's point, he's saying that you could have a 12-foot tall wall. The dirt on the front side of the wall might be at the foot of the wall and the dirt on the back side might be four feet below, basically have like a four-foot pair of the walls sticking up. And that be the measurement. Most people who spend, uh, you know, the kind of time and resources and effort on these walls, maximize their rear yard to the most possible. They know backfill that up to within a few inches and then put saw right up against it so that you can get the flattest backyard you have. So, we haven't had to deal with the technicality of somebody underfilling the backside of a wall and having, you know, a taller than eight-foot exposed wall with the backside being underfilled. Technically, I guess we can, we could probably call it that way, but I'm not out in the field doing the building permit inspections as we're reviewing these. So, it's finished grade at the bottom with whatever foot is required to be buried to finished grade at the top was the measurement of the wall height. And it doesn't say anything about landscaping. Um, I have an opinion on that if you want it. So, our, you know, our, our city has a, we're responsive code enforcement. We're like many small cities in being responsive code enforcement and landscaping ordinances aside from like the, the most obvious weed ordinances where properties have just been left to run wild are really difficult to enforce. So, our capacity to go out and deal with somebody who has, you know, let street trees die and us try to get them to replace those in a drought is really, really low. That's falls low on the totem pole compared to parking impacts or dogs running around or other things that the code enforcement, you know, offices generally dealing with. Uh, so I'm concerned about allowing something, but having a hinge on private property owners maintaining landscaping as a surveying, because we, you know, you're just chasing people after the fact. And someone forgets, they let the trees die, now the tall wall, someone points to that tall wall that's not buried behind some landscaping, though it's just, I, you know, ease, ease of administration in setting the height and then not having all of the other standards that you have to apply backwards to it.
So, as I looked at the lease, the planning committee and staff looked at, I noticed one city particularly doesn't even allow retaining walls to be used to the lovely yards. Is that a safety issue or what?
It's just that it's an aesthetics thing, I'm guessing. You know, we have, we have some huge tall walls. I don't know exactly what went in, but I went out with council members and we toured some subdivisions in the city that have been there for, you know, five plus years, seven years. There's a few real tall walls and they were used to just maximize as, as flat as possible. And I think that it's cities that are just trying to say, you know, developed on a hillside, you kind of get what you get and you can do certain size of retaining walls in order to get a flat backyard, but you can't just throw 20 feet of wall up. Okay?
Anything else, uh, you wanted to gauge, counsel? Counsel, do you have any questions for Scott? Councilmember Swanson, please.
Uh, just, excuse me. You and I were out looking around that one day and saw some pretty tall retaining walls, some made out of that concrete Lego block and some, a couple of them made out of basically garden retaining. Some, a couple of them made out of basically garden retaining wall, right, that are fifteen, eighteen feet kind of tall. The the question that I asked John in a couple of conversations that I had with John is when it comes to the having, uh you know, you've got a twelve foot wall and we only allow eight foot of it to be exposed. What is the difference between a bush and a pile of dirt or rocks? None of them add any kind of structural integrity to the wall. All three of them, unless they're maintained, are gonna look hideous.
We we have to choose, you choose average grade, the same way you measure a house.
So if we're piling rocks, technically, we're measuring the dirt that's under the rocks, not the rocks themselves, right?
Yeah, you're measuring, so if it's the rock wall, if it's a rock, gravity rock wall, you measure from the average grade toe of that rock wall, you don't measure from the bottom of.
What if I have, say, in Mister D's instance, and another one that's just a little bit to the west and some others that we looked at? Where you have a wall that's taller than eight feet and dirt and some rocks have been piled up so that you can only see eight feet. Where's the grade? Is it the actual grade of where the yard would stop? Or is it the new artificial grade where the dirt was piled up to? Or is it now where the rocks are piled up to? Where where do we determine the grade?
So there's tiered wall systems and we have an ordinance for that. So it'd be anything that's on your property, the lowest wall, the wall closest to your property might be tier of all system one, and then we count everything from that point like stair steps up. So whatever happens on your neighbor's property in front of it, whatever else, if you've got stacked walls, that's their own tiered system and then there starts from the lowest point on their property. So if if Mister D were able to put a row of rocks and dirt on the in front of this wall on his property, then that would be where the tiered one system works or starts from. And then from, you have to have, in his case, I think it'd be difficult, you have to have the amount of separation as the tallest portion of the wall visible between those two systems. So in order to put one in front of it, basically you'd have to have the horizontal distance away from it for how tall that wall system is.
So just to clarify this, if Brad put a four foot rock wall at the bottom of that, then technically his wall would have to come in four feet before it would have to be four feet away.
Because then it would be creating a tiered system.
And so it actually says, um, in tiered walls separated horizontally by a distance that exceeds the largest adjacent wall height. So technically, it's whatever the taller side is. So you
So you'd have to come in eight feet if that was what was exposed above them. So Scott, what's the solution here? In your mind, I mean.
Cut them all. I mean, it's, it really is, it's a, I don't, I don't know. I mean, the the in this particular case, the property owner was told the rules during the building permit process. So there wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't hidden. There's red line notes on the building permit that say at completion of your building permit, you will, you know, the rule is no more than eight feet of exposed wall. So I don't know what the solution is. And changing the ordinance could certainly be a solution. That's not, I mean, there's, there's nothing unsafe about the wall. It's an excellent retaining wall. Eight feet is an aesthetic thing. Council's here to consider what, you know, what that means for the city as a whole and you determine what's best.
Thank you. Council, what other questions do you have for Scott? I don't see any. Uh would it be appropriate to have our chair of our planning commission uh come and speak to us regarding their recommendation and give us some little thoughts? Eric?
Yeah. Mayor, Commissioner, Council. Good to be with you tonight. So we've kind of mulled this over quite a bit as we've talked about it.
Can we hold it down out there in the, so we can hear it?
And uh, you know, it it's hard because you look at and say, what is the city? You know, the question is brought up. What is the city's role? Are we getting into, we're we're taking over the engineering and liability of these walls by saying, hey, this is what we say. So now we're determining what the, what that's gonna be. Now granted, we're putting limits in there to say when an engineer needs to step in outside of us. But then the question is brought up, well, if the wall's engineered to be safe, then why does it matter how tall it is? So then that brings in the aesthetics. So we're saying, well, we're limiting height just for aesthetics. Well, then how do we accomplish that? And so that's, that's a little bit of the struggle with one particular wall that's been brought up tonight is you know, the structure, the engineering of it isn't an issue. It's, it doesn't need because it's over eight feet tall on the aesthetic side. And so that's, you know, so how how is there a balancing act and 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 really how do you, how do you make a rule that can govern all of this uh throughout the city? And and the hard thing is, as we talked about, is concrete engineered walls are one in fifty probably in the city. I mean, ninety seven percent of walls in the city are built out of gravity retaining walls. Occasionally, we start to see a few and and when you see a cement vertical wall, that's usually because there's a lot of space to accommodate some, a tiered system or something other other than that, or you know, the aesthetics of it from the other side. People don't want to deal with the weeds and the rocks and the animals and the varmints that live in them or you know, the Lego block walls and things like that. So on that side of it, you know, the eye of the beholder, what looks better and and that. So it's part not having this wall, you know, govern what rule we made for the city, as we felt like, well, eight feet seems to be fine. One thing uh I noticed when Scott was talking that probably needs to be corrected in there is from an engineering standpoint, you know, him referring to whatever wall is adjacent, that's the distance. It really should be the lower wall, from a lower wall to the next wall up. However, how that tall that door wall is, is the setback for the next wall above it. It it doesn't fill in reversal order. When you've got an eight foot wall on top of four foot, it needs to be eight feet now. The idea behind that from an engineering standpoint is from bottom of wall to bottom of wall, you get a one to one slope so that, you know, as gravity, something happens or whatever. Dirt usually doesn't fill beyond the one to one slope, so. Anyway, that's, so that that's something that probably needs to be looked at, but you know, in in this particular instance, if you do put boulders in front of it, you know, I don't know how high it needs to be, if it's three foot or four foot of boulder. You know, technically, then the part that's exposed eight feet needs to, you know, has that four foot distance if that was the case. Um so, you know, we we've molded over a lot and also trying to think of the building department and how do we enforce, regulate and understand this. And sometimes, especially with boulder walls, if you're driven around the city, you without an engineering degree can probably look at a wall and be like, that looks sturdy, and then look at another one and be like, ooh, I don't I want to be below that. And so some thoughts that we've had and and, you know, probably more on my side is you know, maybe not so much focusing on with boulder walls since that's what we deal with a lot in the city is you know, the fourth foot rule requiring engineering to come in, but maybe something attached to that is a little bit more like if it's three rocks or more tall, it requires, you require to be engineered. Simply put, is if you've driven around, you see some um, some people have built walls and and for twenty years, people have come up and taken rocks off my property on a hillside. I just have a rule saying, if you can pick it up, you can take it. And so we've had people with wheelbarrows or whatever taking rocks off and they're one foot in size, maybe a two inches. They're now building retained walls in their yards with them. And you get four feet tall with one foot boulders, that's not a very structurally sound wall just in itself. There's not a lot of mass in that. So in some instances, we may have walls that are four feet tall that fail because you built with such small rocks. I've seen a lot of those for whatever reason going in. People harvesting the rocks off their lots as they're building homes up on the hillside, trying to utilize those small ones and and then they push that four foot limit to five to six feet or whatever. And then all of a sudden you've got a six foot wall that's got six rows of rocks. And so something in there maybe help. Probably so, just if we're in there trying to regulate things, something probably helps common sense a little bit with, you know, you're building a wall and just like the pyramids would build, you're bigger at the bottom than you are at the top. And so so anyway, I I don't know how much, you know, from the planning commission standpoint. You know, we looked at it, if we're creating an ordinance to to govern this, then eight feet seem like logical height. With the exception, I mean, in our conversations also realizing there's instances where that may need to be exceeded. And how do you how do you put something in the ordinance to say, oh, well, if this happens, then if X happens, then why? And you hate to put that on well, if the city engineer, you know, mayor, you made a good comment earlier, the city. Well, if the city engineer says that you don't have to do it, then you don't, you know, when this, when this ordinance was created, um, I was on the planning commission then as well and and you know, I objected to it just simply because of the issues of the difficulty of managing exactly what we're here for today. And, you know, with that, with what in mind is, we have a lot of subdivisions that have been approved in the city that are built. And the homes that go in those, all of a sudden now, if you need to tier several rows of rocks on a particular lot, and all of a sudden you got a rock wall right on the back door. And so what originally was put in the ordinance back then to offset that was exactly what we're talking about tonight is well, this can be a variance can be granted by way of the city engineer if they determine oh, you don't need to do the tiers as much because it it doesn't work. And that was simply to address existing lots in the city prior to this ordinance. You know, really, if we're having this ordinance, then subdivisions should be developed with that in mind. Lots need to be a little bit in on a hillside, lots might need to be a little bit bigger to accommodate a tiered wall system so that they can still accommodate the average home that seems to be being built. So it's hard to have, I wouldn't like to have the city, you know, the city engineer has either a scapegoat or a blind person, you know, and he's getting phone calls and from everybody else saying, well, what about this or what about that? So creating something that's in there and you know, and I don't know how you do that from the standpoint of particular all this work being talked about tonight. You know, we, when we talked about fences um years ago on property lines, you know, fences on top of retaining walls and things like that. You know, we threw around the idea, well, if the neighbor that's putting the fence up or whatever agrees to it, then it can exceed a certain height because they both want it. You're not impeding, you know, one person's opinion or heights on the neighbor. And then you end up saying, well, a neighbor goes to us, somebody goes to the neighbor and says, hey, I want to put a ten foot fence in, do you mind? And they don't want to be a bad neighbor and say, well, no, but what they really want, they might. So we don't want to put that burden on. But we have that exact situation here tonight is one, the neighbor that is looking at the tall wall that where the aesthetics reading that we are making this rule wants it to be taller. It works and accommodates for the home. And so I don't know how you address those situations and you know, if it is simply aesthetics, in my opinion, it's when it comes down to the engineering standpoint, if the safety factor is met, then what else are we looking at? And how do we make this rule govern everything where and 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 I agree, what's the difficult situation we're in with this is, this wall was built after the ordinance was in place. And so it is it's not, you know, here we are looking this, oh, we didn't realize it and it's been built and now how do we help solve that? You know, it's, it's difficult. We want to, we want to be good, but we don't want to be in a situation every time people just go forward. So I sorry, I'm long-winded about this and hopefully you have any questions you have.
I appreciate the comment, Eric, on the fact that you shouldn't be looking at this as an individual wall. You should be looking at this as what's good for the city overall. And I think we're gonna see most of our development up on the hill these days. That's kind of what the land is like. Second thing is, you probably should quit giving those rocks away. You've got some walls.
Yeah, well, we don't like to build all those little rocks. They all stand.
Thank you for your comments. Any other questions for Mister Thomas?
Quick question to make sure I understood. Uh what were you saying about the three rock standard as opposed to a, how many feet?
Something that, you know, rather than, when you're building a gravity wall out there out of boulders, you know, and as you all know, that's part of what my company does and we've built hundreds of them. It's hard, a little bit harder for an inspector or somebody to look at it, or they're up there and saying, oh, it's four feet, six inches. You gotta get an engineer. You know, if there's something in there to help the building department regulate a little bit, because the builders are gonna just be pushing the limit, you know, four feet, four and a half feet, or wherever it is. And, you know, if it's, if if it, or in a sense of if it is a four foot wall, but it's four rows of one foot rocks. You know, and the, and the building inspector be like, I don't think that wall, wall is very safe. That gives them something to say, you know, hey, we need you to lift this wall or you need to use bigger rocks or or something, you know, an engineer needs to just come up and say, well, yeah, four foot tall. One foot boulders is insufficient, then, you know, it signs off. So it just kind of helps probably a little bit in the regulating side of it. Or in the instance where, hey, the wall ends up being five feet tall, you know, what? I've got a wall that we're building right now and it's, you know, the engineer's looked at it. I think we're about an average of five feet on each tier and it's two rocks. The bottom rock, the rock of each tier is four to five feet tall. And so they're huge rocks. They're not, it's not going anywhere, but that's how rock walls should be built, you know, and uh so it really gives probably a little bit more between the city engineer, the building inspector and everybody that to work with a builder in those situations by, you know, if there's a caveat in there, say, hey, you know, there's a little bit of leniency saying, well, I know you're a little bit over four feet, but you're on two rocks, that's probably okay. Whereas if, or we draw a hard fast line, hey, anything over three rocks high is required to be engineered, even if it's only a four feet tall. That way, those small walls that potentially will fail will be looked at because those guys collecting those one foot rocks building them.
So if you, you build a wall, so your, your recommendation is, it's not necessarily the height, it's the size of the rocks, but we do want something in the house.
Well, yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, from a safety standpoint, engineering philosophy is keep everything to a one to one slope, from bottom of wall to bottom of the next wall, as a one foot rise over one foot run. And that, so that all the mass that's pushing behind that is going down on a forty five degree angle.
So there's the clarity. If I, if you had three rocks and it was four foot, eight inches tall, it wouldn't have to be engineered.
That's, that's my opinion, rather than, or that gives the bill, you know, the building department the ability to say, yeah, that's okay. You know, because really you go out there and kick eight inches of dirt against the bottom of the rock and say, oh, I'm not safe, it's four feet tall. I mean, that's, that's what we're gonna have in the city, you know, just so we know going into this is we're gonna have rock walls built and bottom, two feet of them are gonna get buried with some sort of dirt so they meet this height requirement. And then when they're doing their landscaping magically, that dirt that was put against there is dug out and leveled out. I mean, it's just you know, it's gonna happen. And so what are ways that we, if we're, if we're stepping our foot into the realm of, as the city to say, how are we enforcing safety? You know, what, what governs that? That's what's an important role for us. The aesthetic side of it, nobody can, you know, what, what commissioner or councilman Swanson thinks is good looking, I might think is, you know, right? But
Rock walls.
You know, yeah. See, rock walls, like, you know, there's some rock walls, but are the, the best looking thing you could put in your yard and others absolutely hate them. So, you know, is it our role to govern the aesthetics if it's simply just, well, we're trying to be sta- set a standard and say, well, we don't want people to have to cream their neck, look over the top of the wall. Most of the time, the walls that are built are you know, it's a neighbor below them or it's the house and they're looking at their backyard.
I think that's a good point. Uh you know, our job as the council, I think, is to keep our community safe. Define what it looks like is, is very difficult, very hard to enforce versus the safety things you brought up. Uh I like the fact that maybe the exception is on aesthetics is an agreement between neighbors because I think frankly, that's how this ordinance probably came about. Somebody complained about looking out their back window into a tall.
Actually, I still question, I don't know how this ordinance came about, honestly, you know, and I, when it was brought before me, I'm like, why are we looking, you know? We haven't had a problem, you know, we, as you know, there'd been a wall that has failed in the city and it was just due to poor construction. It wasn't, and it wasn't a boulder wall, you know, a concrete vertical wall that, and so, you know, I'm sure that wall was engineered, it just wasn't built for the, what the engineer required it, but, you know, pretty. Pretty minimal in any issues that we've had with walls, especially as you go up on the hill, the soil up there is very. Sturdy, you know, from the stance of. It'll stand on its own, it doesn't need much help to hold it back, but. Again, our number one role if we're stepping into this as a city is, we're gonna step into it and we're stepping in the same, we're saying, making sure it's safe. But in doing so, we need to make sure that we're making sure it's safe, but we're not the ones telling people it's safe. We need to let other professionals do that, we don't need to have the city be governing. You know, engineering on safety, but some of the common sense things that we can put in and. And then, as important is, every time we make an ordinance is how do we enforce it, how do we govern it? And that, and helping the, the poor building department deal with all these builders that are trying to. Skirt the edges, you know, push the limits, what things can, you know, make it more tools in their toolbox to help. Help the builders do things right, and also help. You know, the building department, they don't, you know, our forces will run with a big hammer and just get along.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Heard me say many times, if we're not going to enforce an ordinance, why have it? And that's kind of, it it's difficult because the, there are many ordinances that are. That are hard to enforce and you've done it kind of on a. On a reactive basis when somebody's brought it to our attention, because it is very difficult to. Certain totals, but I do agree that our, our responsibility is one of safety. And, uh, we are not experts in defining what that is, and so I like the, the idea of using. Professionals to make that assessment, what I say. Yes, councilmember Barker?
I've actually got a pretty. What's it called? I've got another commitment I'm supposed to be running to here in, right now. Um, can I give my opinion real quick?
Go ahead.
Before, I don't think I'll be here to vote unless you're still here and when I get back. I spoke with, I spoke with Brad, I spoke with the city's department. I I spoke with Brandon Bell today and he mentioned something that got me thinking. A couple of months ago, we changed our ordinance for accessory buildings, because right now you can build a ten foot building, three feet in on your property line. And then if it wants to go larger, you gotta start stepping it in. What's the difference between an accessory building and a retaining wall for aesthetics wise? Right now, we're saying you can build a, for this case, we could build a fourteen foot retaining wall on property line, but you can't build a fourteen foot. Accessory building on property line.
Yeah, we do have that step.
Because it's all, what what view are we hindering? I don't know what the right answer is, I wanted to hear what the discussion was on, because I spoke with Scott today as well about vegetation and is that a good thing or a bad thing? Enforcing it would be a nightmare, as someone that has to help enforce vegetation, it would be a nightmare. But, my point is. We have a standard for accessory buildings and they have to be stepped in, how come retaining walls don't have to be stepped in? But on that case, I'm gonna run.
I think you should drive instead of run.
Oh, yeah. If you've seen me run, I would not make it up.
All right, council, you've heard from the chairman of our planning commission, you've heard from staff. Uh, on their recommendation, uh, you've had some discussion, what further discussion or questions do you have? I think there's been some good points, uh. Brought up. Let's see, maybe require some tweaking of the proposed ordinance. Councilmember Swanson?
Just quickly thinking about what councilmember Barker just said. It it's interesting that if you have a. In the case of tiered lots, where you have one lot that's significantly below the other. The lot that's down on, if we're talking about an accessory building, even if you build a. You know, fourteen foot building and it has to be back five feet. Person down below is still looking at a forty two foot tall building, depending on where their lot sits, even if it is set back five feet. Which, um. Uh, I suppose we could get into those weeds, the thing that has been. Since, uh, visiting with. Both parties involved, driving around the city, uh, looking at some of the retaining walls that we have out there, rock. Uh, decorative block, the the concrete Legos. I mean, we have one home on a very prominent intersection that about four years ago. Four years ago, yeah, maybe five years ago, the the person raised their front yard by three feet with railroad ties. That are now bowing out and ready to sag off, but they put in sprinklers and. All kinds of wonderful things. What I, i- in this particular. Discussion, and and I'm not referring to this particular wall, but in the discussion of these retaining walls. What I keep hearing is that the eight foot thing was an aesthetic. It's not about safety, right? And I struggle with the city getting involved in the aesthetics of things. Um, that we start saying on individual basis like this that. Well, your eighteen foot retaining wall is beautiful, so we're gonna let that one go, yours is concrete, we're not gonna let that one go. Um, the eight foot. As as I've looked through the ordinance, as I've talked to the engineers, I've talked to Scott, I've talked to John. Uh, the eight foot is, seems to be a visual standard, it's certainly not a structural standard, it's not a safety standard. And if it's just visual and structural. Uh, and non-structural, non-safety. I don't have a problem with. An aesthetically acceptable. Uh, in this case, between two neighbors and an aesthetically acceptable solution to cover all but eight feet of the wall. I don't care if it's a bush. Um, it could be tiered rocks that then fill with weeds and snakes and varmints and isn't cared for. Um, there's a number of. Of legal ways to do it. That would look worse than a set of bushes stuck in front of it. Because the structure, the safety doesn't change. Right, um. I'm thinking about the the wall that failed just a few doors down. That Scott and I talked, uh, looked through the yard and looked at that wall. That, that terrace, that that tiered wall that was stuck to the bottom, you know, dirt with a few rocks stuck on top, that certainly was not. Doesn't set back, right, they raised it a good couple of feet and there's no two foot separation between the top of that. And that retaining wall that got built, and we drive around all over the city and. I I agree with Eric's comments about. That he made when this was first brought to the planning commission years ago, why are we getting into this? Why are we getting into the aesthetics?
We're kind of into aesthetics in the city.
We are.
Parking on lawns.
With which, how much do do we enforce?
Oh, I know there was a council member that was concerned about a car, who was.
Oh, that was just in passing, that was just a comment in passing, you know what I'm talking about.
I I do agree that, you know, safety ought to be our primary. Issue here and. To me, if an engineer signs off of it, off it, and takes the liability, even if it's a rock wall, I don't know why six foot rock wall is the. Standard. If an engineer is willing to sign off and say, an eight foot rock wall is safe. You know. Why are we setting any limit on height if an engineer is willing to say it's safe? And takes the liability for indicating it's safe.
The long and short of it for me is, I don't have a problem with with an aesthetically pleasing solution to cover. Um, the wall, you know, a structurally engineered sound wall. I don't have a problem, and whether it's rocks or dirt or a bush. It it doesn't matter to me.
So who makes the decision if it's aesthetically pleasing? Because you got, I I got the feeling this thing is put in place, because. Of the aesthetic, somebody said, you know, I'm looking out my back door, I see this four foot wall. And, you know, we, that's how we kind of got into this accessory building thing, I recall initially.
Right.
Because somebody came in and said, you know, these guys are building these big, huge buildings, and so we said, oh, we'll fix that. Then we thought about it and we said, well, wait a minute. You know, as long as it's properly set back. Why do we care as long as it's construction, constructed properly? So, to me, I'm wondering if we even get into the heights discussion at all. Uh, and base it on the fact that we have an engineer who will sign off on the safety of that wall. I mean, I, that's my feeling, like, if it's a safety issue, we can't define what that is, we let an engineer decide that and. He says a ten foot rock wall is safe. And, uh. So be it. So I'm wondering if we get into height restrictions at all. Mister Call, I would like to hear from you as a, a city manager and city attorney, you've been around for a while and I. I think the council always appreciates your input.
So, I think you said it well, mayor, that we, we basically deal with, the ordinances are an aesthetic ordinance most of the time. In safety, a good example is the fire code and the building code. Those are established by an international council and the state, and we have to follow the rules the state has us follow. You know, we've had that discussion recent, fairly recently. Um, the issue that you will have on retaining walls is the same issue you'll have on on accessory buildings. It'll, it'll be the complaints from the people who don't, who are on the downhill side or the side hillside or whatever. And that'll have the issue legally, the council's perfectly fine to pick any number or no number if they want to. Um, but, because I think you said it right, mayor, the, the. Engineer is the one who's accepting the liability. I will say though, that we, I have seen a report fairly recently from an engineer that said. Uh, this wall will be safe, but you have to inspect it monthly, and if you see anything move. Then you need to let us know, because once it starts to move, if you're not, if you're not repairing and fixing it, then basically their guarantee goes away. So that was them kind of, kind of. Relieving themselves of liability for the wall after a month of non-inspection, I I guarantee you that wall has not been inspected and I think it's only been up six months. So.
Sounds like a CPA permission, uh, opinion on.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, so I think you're right, it's. The the council could legally pick any height they want to or no height. It's just there will be issues, if there's a no, if there's no number picked, you will end up with a. Thirty foot wall, forty foot wall, I think Pleasantview has one, uh, just on, just up by Rock Rock on the east side of their city. That's a pretty tall wall.
Yeah, right, I've seen that, but but once again, you know. How are we to pick a height, knowing it's safe versus having an engineer? And I I guess if a homeowner wants to. Relieve an engineer of that responsibility by saying, they ought to maybe think about that before they build the wall. That's their their call, right? And, you know, we've kind of said to ourselves, uh, we're we're getting somewhat out of the aesthetics business when we. Increase the height of. Of, uh. Accessory buildings, but yet we still require a certain type of. Of, uh, things on, like for instance, promiscuous point, we want to keep the city looking good. So, we're never even get out of the aesthetics business if we want to keep North Dog and. It's it's beauty, but to me. You know, this is a safety issue and. You know, I I don't know, I don't want to go against the experts here, but if it's, if it's safety. Um. Then it'll be defined by somebody that knows what that is, not us. John, is that a peace sign, is, what is that?
This is, this is me, I just, I have a, a comment that it'd probably be good that, um, to. Establish some sort of a setback, if the council said the maximum height is thirty feet, you know, just pick a number. That there should be some sort of a setback from structures, so that if that wall fails, it won't fail into a house. Or into a structure, and so if if we're heading down that path. As the council is, then I, I, we probably need some, a little bit beefy language to say, hey, this is how we're going to, this is when we know we're gonna trigger this. Extra review, for example, if you're building on a, a lot or next to a lot that doesn't have a structure on it. How high can you go? Because again, if that wall fails. Where does, um, where will it?
There we go, what do we have, a thirty foot backyard setback or twenty?
Twenty, mostly twenty.
So, you at least have that setback, right? Like, I guess if it's a rock wall, the rocks could tumble in, but. If a wall fell over, you you still got that twenty foot setback in the backyard. So, good discussion, uh, council, councilmember Dalpas?
Yeah, I I think one thing that I've learned being on the city council is, a lot of times we go into a conversation in depth and. What I worry about is, three months down the road, six months down the road, that we have a local resident in the neighborhood that says. Councilman Dalpas, I hate this wall, this wall is way too tall, how was this ever allowed in it's, and it's an aesthetic issue for them. And so, the the thing that I'm worried about is if we start to say it's all on engineering. Then we get into the situation where we have people talking to us and saying, well, this fifteen foot wall or whatever it is that was approved. It's horrible, I I do not like the look, and, and so I'm, I'm a little bit nervous about going. Down that road where we don't have the firm ordinance of eight feet, because. Opinions will always vary and we're going to have situations where. I I can just call it now, I know I'm going to get a call in six months or something that says. Councilman Dalpas, what what's up with this wall? And I hate it, and because I've had this happen with other situations before. And so that's, that's kind of my thing is, I kind of feel like drawing the line in the sand, the ordinance was there. I think, apparently for a reason, it was aesthetic in nature, and I think personally that the ordinance is okay.
Okay, I appreciate your comments, so you could always say, if they came to you, you could say like Ronald Reagan, Mr. Gorbachev, take down that wall. But, uh, I know we don't want to get into that, uh, area, but we kind of already dipped our toes into that by. When we, we took the height of, uh, accessory buildings, right? We we said, well, wait a minute, uh, sure, there's some setback, for setback, but we increased the height of those to twenty five feet, I think. And, uh, we also had the problem of. Uh, kind of splitting the baby by saying, well, some people don't like metal buildings. But other people are saying, hey, I like metal buildings, that's all I can afford. And so we said, you know. Uh, we went twenty five feet and we went out. Define metal buildings, so we're kind of already down that road, and I think no matter what decision you make, uh. You know, it'll be like everything else, fifty percent, fifty percent will like it, the same wall might like it, so. But I appreciate your, your opinion and respect it. Councilmember Swanson, it looks like the cause are turning, if you have something else you wanted to say?
Say that again. You said my name and attorney in the same sentence and that doesn't compute.
I know, it kind of shocked you there for a minute, did you have another comment you wanted to make?
Well, just, you know, I I. I've certainly experienced what councilman Dalpas is describing over the last eight plus plus years. I I I don't know that that you can respond to that, uh, you know, as we travel around the city now, there are. There are six foot walls that are hideous looking, in my opinion. And there are eighteen, twenty foot retaining walls that are gorgeous. Um, and that's my personal opinion, the the. I think the, the issue that I'm trying to wrap my head around and trying to do better at, as I serve. Is, it isn't my wall. It isn't my property. And, uh, you know, if. You know, my backyard neighbor may want me to put up a vinyl fence, but I put up a cedar fence and they don't like cedar fencing. Right, I I mean. I I may have, uh, you know, my back door neighbor now, I've got a four foot chain link fence be- between us and. There's a certain kind, certain kinds of bushes and trees and things, and I hope they like them. But those are the bushes that we planted, a- and, uh. I, boy, it just get, you can just get so far into the weeds with this. I I I can live with keeping the eight foot limit, I think the tweet comes in, how do we achieve that eight foot limit? If we're okay with pile and dirt up against the bottom and stacking a couple of rocks, as in. If we're okay with pile and dirt up against the bottom and stacking a couple of rocks as in. You know, just a, a few doors to the west of Mr. D's home was done just recently, right? It's a brand new home. Uh, and that counts, right? There was no setback between the, the first terrace and then the, the, the wall. If that counts to reach the eight foot, then a bush ought to count to reach the eight foot, in my mind.
And, and that's what the difficult that I think is, is Eric pointed out, enforcement of aesthetics is near impossible. That's why I don't think we get into that. I would like us to focus on the height of the wall and the safety of a licensed engineer. I think that way it makes it, uh, easier for inspectors on our building department. They don't have to be making those decisions. But, uh, you know, there's, there's one thing that, uh, you saw in my response to all of you. As we, as some of this issue is that, um, whatever we decide. Uh, we need to stick with and support our staff. Because it's very confusing and discouraging for them to be doing their job of enforcing an ordinance. And then, uh, having it overridden by us as a council is very frustrating. So whatever we decide, I would hope that, uh, we're in support of our team in doing that. So we have on the agenda an ordinance, alright, which is twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-four.
I have a comment?
I, I've just been mulling, like, I don't know if you've seen the cogs turning and I bring, normally they show on my face that.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Extron.
Yeah, I, as I have said many times, I wish we could get away with, you know, removing all ordinances except for. Don't cause a problem for your neighbor. I mean, really, that's, that's really the one that I want. I, I don't like the city, it's like, don't make a step down. You know, get along with your neighbors. And for me, I, I am always going to take function over form. And so I think as long as something is safe, I mean, I, I'm thinking, when, when was this? I have, I have probably like a. Fifteen-foot gravity rock retaining wall that's going from, you know, because I have a, a lockout basement and so it's like. Rocks kind of going straight up and you can come down around the back. I've got a, you know, my own fence that's mounted on top of a retaining wall, you know, and I think. That, wh- when did all of these kind of interfering ordinances come in? It must have been before two thousand five when my house was built. So I think. Can, can we just build something that does what it needs to do? I mean, if you want to have a. Flat, you need to have a retaining wall of certain size. I really would like it to be built structurally sound and I guess. This is where my dad, the contractor, that built all sorts of big ugly things that were really strong. Um, kind of come then, like I, I want it to be functional. So I would really love to pare down a lot of our ordinances and their interference on personal property, right? And that's just kind of my viewpoint, so.
Yeah, however, I would stay without ordinances. Uh, you won't get along with your neighbor. The city will look fairly ugly at the end of the day, so. Um, I'm a property rights guy, but I, as Mr. Brandon Bell would always say, both parties have rights and need to balance those two, so. Uh, council, we can. Tweet the ordinance, we can postpone, we can, uh, accept. As is, uh, the agenda is a motion to approve ordinance twenty. Twenty-two dash twenty-four was presented, uh, to us. Um, I would say that when we do have an ordinance, it needs to be very clear and enforceable. Uh, because, uh, what we're getting into, and I'm not saying this specific to the instance. Uh, that was brought up this evening, but we cannot start getting into the forgiveness versus commission. And saying, well, you can't do anything about it since it's happened. Because that makes all ordinances unenforceable in my mind. So the clarity of the ordinance needs to be put in place. Uh, I personally know, uh, I'm building a home and my building permit was rejected several times over wall height. And, uh. You know, I, I live with that. I think everybody should live with it, whatever the ordinance is. So before us is, uh, uh, the decision, so I'd be looking for a motion this evening. Or, or Councilmember Severing, did you have something to add here?
Yeah, I was just thinking, I've just been listening and thinking, seems like we spent a lot of time on this discussion, but, um. If we actually pass an ordinance, aren't we going to be visiting this again when there's really a need for like a ten-foot wall? I mean, no lot is ever the same.
You know, that's why I'm saying that we get into the height, that we just get into the safety issue of an engineer saying, here's the wall.
So I would say.
We got into this.
We either postpone.
If it's four feet, we have to go, I don't know what that means, safety aspect of things.
I think we either postpone this discussion or create some kind of autonomy for the city engineer to say, you know what? There is not one lot in one subdivision that is exactly the same. I mean, that's the, that's the beauty of real estate. Every lot can be different, right? So if we, if we, uh, if we pass an ordinance for an eight-foot maximum, we're just going to be visiting this again. And saying, okay, well, why did we do this back in two, twenty-two? So to me, I think it's, I think it's a, uh, I think it's, I think it's crazy to pass this ordinance tonight.
Councilman, well, you can, you can surely make a motion, uh, with Councilmember Swanson. You know, or I seek a motion, Councilmember Swanson?
I, I agree with Councilmember Severing, um. Uh. I'm not comfortable with where we are in the language and with the ordinance itself. That I'd be able to vote in favor of it simply because I think. Uh, you know, obviously, I've, I've stated how I feel about, uh, you know, covering the bottom portion of a wall that doesn't meet the eight feet. Um, I think we need to hammer those things out in the language of the ordinance before. Um, we go about trying to pass this thing and have some further discussion, maybe a joint, uh, work session with. Planning Commission and Council. And, uh, and our engineers and, and all involved to, because ultimately as a council, we need to pass something. That, uh, puts the burden of the ordinance on our shoulders, right? We're the ones that pass it. We're the ones that create it, so the heat should be coming our way, not to, not at staff. And when we pass something that's ambiguous. Um, then we create untenable situations for staff. And, uh, as I've been reminded, that's not fair. I hate the word fair, but it just isn't fair that we create some nebulous thing and then it puts a lot of pressure. And puts staff in a situation where there is no right, there is no wrong, while they're always wrong in those situations, so. I agree with Councilman Sever.
I'm one of the, likes simple and clear. Councilmember Dowpas, do you have a motion or?
No, I just wanted to just follow up to that. I just think that. I'm just worried that, I mean, I think in this situation, I think it was known throughout the process that this will not be allowed. And I don't know where exactly it fell through and, and made the height higher. You know, it was, it was warned at some point that it should not be done. So that's, that's kind of the thing I'm really struggling with.
John, let me ask you a question. If this ordinance has changed, would it be retroactive or is the. Building subject to the ordinance at the time of issuance of the building permit?
So when, when an ordinance is changed, uh, people have the option of sticking with the original ordinance or the new ordinance, so this. This could be applied to any of the walls in the city that are under construction or have been constructed.
Thank you. I would be looking for a motion then.
Just, just one additional comment, if I may.
Councilmember Swanson.
Council, uh, Councilmember Dowpas, that day that we were down there, up there looking at those and we looked at the one that, that failed just a few days later.
We were literally looking at it before it failed.
Right, right, just a few days before it failed. Um. That wall didn't meet the ordinance. And it was passed. Right? So the ordinance was in place. The, it, it, it's, there are sections that are greater than eight feet. A tiered semblance of a wall was stuffed up against the bottom of it without the proper setback. And that was passed off. So even the ordinance in existence with a brand new house being built didn't get applied, and I think part of that is because of the nebulous nature. Of the existing ordinance and, and why we've got to get as, get as clear, clear as we can.
All right, I'd be looking for a motion then, Council, Councilmember Severing, do you have a motion?
I certainly do. Mayor, I move that we postpone this discussion. To a future work night where we can meet with the planning commission, with the city engineer, Eric, if you'd be available for that. Uh, it just seems to me that, um, trying to come up with one particular standard is going to be very, very difficult. As long as it's a safe, safe engineer.
You have a motion.
So that's my vote.
We have a second to that motion.
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember Extron, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of postponing this, uh, on our agenda, if you can, if you want, you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Dowpas. The ordinance passes on a three-to-one vote. Uh, thanks, council, for your, uh, input and your. Your opinions, I fully respect those and, um, certainly warrants for the next go. All right, uh, we'll move on to item number six. Uh, which is a discussion or action to consider a franchise agreement with all West Utah. Uh, John Call of City Manager will be making that presentation.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, council, this, this agreement, um. Is the exact same agreement you've seen before, uh, when we did it for Senta Way. It's the same agreement that I believe Comcast and Seringa approved. And so this is in some ways two-fold one. Are you okay continuing with the same agreements, um, and with this type of a thing? And then the next question would be is. If we're not doing language changes, are you okay, council, if we just put these on the consent agenda as opposed to. A full discussion in the future, because I do imagine there'll be some more telecommunications conference that might want these types of agreements.
Let me just ask this question, anytime we approve an agreement, it takes a roll call vote. So how would we do that? Is that. Uh, by statute or? Because when we've done an agreement or an ordinance, it's always been a roll call vote. So how would we do that in your opinion on the consent agenda?
So essentially what we'd be doing is, um, that since this is the form that would be approved and it wouldn't be changed. That would be essentially the, the generic form that was established by the roll call vote. And then any future use of it where we're just changing the name and contact information, it would. We'd just bring it back and it, so we wouldn't be changing anything.
So the, the motion tonight is specific to all West Utah.
Correct.
Where, uh, probably should be just approving the form of the agreement.
Uh, so sorry, you're right, Mayor. What I meant to say is, if you're okay, council, we would bring this back as a generic form. That the council could approve and then it would just roll forward into consent agendas.
But do we need to get this particular item approved this evening and then?
Yes.
Feature being okay, council? Uh, we have agreed, the force agreement, A fifteen dash twenty-two. Do you have any further questions, Mister Call? If not, I would look for a motion to approve agreement, A fifteen dash twenty-two.
Mayor, I move that we approve agreement, A fifteen dash twenty-two.
Thank you, Councilmember Extron.
I second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Severing, is there any further discussion on this issue? Seeing none, uh, take a roll call vote. Councilmember Extron?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Severing?
Yes.
Uh, motion passed unanimously. Uh, we'll now move on to item seven on our agenda, which is a discussion or action to consider an agreement. Brandon Miles for the city prosecutor services. And the agreement was in your packet. Uh, this would be agreement, A sixteen dash twenty-two. Uh, Mister Call, do you have anything you'd like to point out to the council?
So council, oh, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mister Call.
Uh, so council, this is the same agreement that's already in place. The original agreement allowed us to extend the contract up to. Two additional years. It was originally a five-year contract. So this would just be an extension of that contract with an additional two hundred dollars a month. Uh, to help compensate for some of the extra work that the state's imposed on the prosecutor's office. Um, but then also just to essentially thank Brandon for the good work he's doing. Um, that in talking with the judge and the court staff, they really do appreciate the way he approaches. Um, all those cases. He's not, he's not overly harsh or underly harsh. He's, he's even killed and, and very thorough, so.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions, Mister Call, before seeking motion? Okay, I see none. This is agreement, A sixteen dash twenty-two, which is a motion to approve that agreement.
Mayor, I move we approve agreement, A sixteen dash twenty-two.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Extron. Any further discussion? Now, we'll go with a roll call vote on this, this agreement, A sixteen dash twenty-two. Councilmember Severing?
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpas?
Yes.
Councilmember Extron?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed unanimously. Uh, we'll now move on to item number eight. This is a discussion on temporary occupancy agreements. Uh, this will be led by John Call of City Manager and Attorney.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, council, this is just a, a question that's come up, um. In the past six or seven months, the city has, um, authorized five temporary occupancy agreements. Primarily for the purpose of allowing for people to obtain their, their financing. Um, meet their, their date lock rates, their lock date rates, whatever it is, uh, to get their financing at the rate they originally planned on. Um, and so, but, but we are seeing these are becoming more and more problematic with additional follow-up. Um, including asking the, the way these are set up is when someone needs some improvements done. Um, to, to finalize the building permit on our side, but not necessarily to finalize the financing. We make them escrow or post money for the amount that they cost to finish the improvements. Well, some of those improvements, uh, for example, one that we did last week was fifteen thousand dollars for asphalt. And so we said to them, well, you can either post the money for the asphalt or. Get the asphalt done and then, you know, leave the other things out there. And so they opted to finish the asphalt because it was coming the next day. And they can get it done in time and still goes on their loan. But not everyone's going to be in that situation. And I guess the long and the short of it is. They, they are not necessarily an administrative nice nightmare, but they do put a big burden on staff, especially with follow-up. Um, but it is a nice thing for residents because it allows for them to close and meet their, their closing date. So it's. It's a little bit of a. I don't, well, I guess coming down to my recommendation, I think they're causing more problems. Than they're providing solutions and I'd recommend that we not use them anymore. Uh, sometimes the, the agreements are becoming, and this is just in general, like the mayor said earlier, sorry, makes, now I'm using, using the mayor's leverage, but. Uh, sometimes the situations turn into more about who's asking for it than what they're asking for, and I just would rather focus on. Um, they not putting the staff and particularly the front office staff in that situation and just saying this is the hard and fast rule that the city lives by. And that's what we're doing, so.
John, how long have we been working together? As the mayor used to, city administrator, city manager?
Almost three years.
And you haven't figured out the mayor has no leverage yet? A little bit concerned about that, that, you know. Council, if you recall, I was one that suggested that you look at this option because of the supply chain issues. Where it was beyond people's control, maybe to get cement or put the approach or. Things and the rising interest rates, it was kind of a service. But it seems like this is almost one of those things that no good deed goes unpunished. Because frankly, think about that, if somebody doesn't comply with temporary occupancy, who's going to go kick them out of the house? You know, that's not a pleasant thing, right? And, you know, as you're talking to John, you know, compliance with these things is not going to be the greatest. So I'm of the opinion too, I mean, you know, we tried to help our citizens and do this and it hasn't turned out real well. So I am supportive of John's recommendation that we discontinue temporarily occupancy permits. Um, because of non-compliance with those and the difficulty in enforcement. So any further discussion or comments from the council, Councilmember Swanson?
Uh, John, uh, tell me if, if I understand our council rules correctly, but at the bottom there, it says. Final action may be taken on any item on the agenda, even though it may be listed as discussion, right? And not discussion and or action.
Correct.
So we could have a motion to do, to. So we could have a motion to do, to stop. Uh, temporary occupancy permits, vote on that tonight.
That, yes, that's correct.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we stop immediately temporary occupancy permits within the city of North Florida.
I second that.
We have a motion, second, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, and sometimes when you. Building a house is a nightmare. As the mayor knows, I know what, you know, and we've been trying to, to build houses. And sometimes when you try and lessen the nightmare, it just, you know, it's. You've kind of just got to fit in, in the structure of it. And, you know, you just know going in, things are not going to go smoothly, they're not going to go on time. And there are rules and it, we just, we have to follow them and the more we try to, well, you know. The more we can get ourselves into trouble, so that's why I think this is, I think this is the smart idea.
We have a motion on the table. Uh, to discontinue temporary occupancy permits in the city. Any further discussion? If not, uh, John probably need a roll call vote on this. Uh, council member Swanson?
Yes.
Council member Dowpass?
Yes.
Council member Severing?
No.
Council member Extron?
Yes.
Motion passes on a three to one vote by council. Um, thank you for your input and uh, courage to vote, your feelings. So, uh, we'll move on now. Before, I just had a thought. That I, I should disclose, uh, just in case it does come to a tie vote, mayor has to vote. Uh, I am in the process of building a home. That will probably subject to whatever the ordinance is on retaining walls. Um, so, just so that you're aware of that. Uh, I wanted to disclose that, uh, that's a potential conflict, just in the case, uh, mayor has to vote. Okay? We'll now move on then to, uh, item number nine. Which is, uh, council member, uh, reports. Understand, I had a brief discussion with council member Severing, he was unable to, uh, make contact with. Uh, Chief Quinney who's out of town, so he's asked to defer his report. Um, council member Extron, do you have anything that you'd like to report? Up to the council and public regarding public courts.
You, so. He's giving me a little update, he says the water line on Mountain Road will be complete and paved on the eighteenth. In fact, it pride that a lot, that will be really nice. Um, piney is going to be shut off on the fourteenth, which I think has generally been the fifteenth, it's going to be the fourteenth, so in case anybody's. Finding on watering on the fifteenth. And they've canceled the burn at the pit, they didn't have permission, um, tomorrow on Thursday. Then they're also having their, um, snowplow meeting next week, we'll bring in changes to the council, so. Um, if you have any suggestion or anything about snowplowing, we're going to be meeting about that. So sometimes it's nice to have residential input when they're making plans on things, for things that they haven't thought of. They think of a lot of things, but they don't think of everything, so. Yeah.
I thought about pushing snow into my approach, or, I don't know, maybe it was pushing it to the road, so. That's my input. Uh, anything else, uh, from the council at this point? Not, we'll now seek additional public comments. Uh, from those, for any tendence, uh, Mr. D, you're welcome to, uh, approach the pulpit. And a few limited comments to five minutes, I would appreciate it.
I'm in a limited, I'm, I'm sorry that, um, I fall under one of those temporary agreements. And, I was. As we signed the agreement, I put thirty-five hundred dollars to the city. So we could cover the wall with dirt and rock. And if, depending on what your decision might be, I will do. Well, my water was turned off the next day and then it was turned off the next day, so, does that mean I? I'm not in this temporary agreement, or do I need to go get a hotel because the water will turn off tomorrow?
I guess my question would be, and I defer this to Mr. Call, is are you in compliance with the occupancy, temporary occupancy permit you signed?
Well, I believe I, I am, because I put up the thirty-five hundred dollars to do the wall. And, and meet the, the ordinance.
And let me ask Mr. Call, Mr. Call, you are very familiar with the, uh, temporary ordinances. Temporary occupancy ordinance, uh, my recollection is that it does not allow occupancy. If the problem is not in the process of being fixed.
That's.
Clarifying.
So, yeah, what it, the, the purpose of the, the agreements was to just provide for that financing component. And so it specifically says the home will not be occupied.
Well, we're saying.
And it is, it is a city agreement, so the council can, can do what they want to do and enforce how they want to enforce, but. The language is in there that says the home will not be occupied.
Which paragraph is that in, Mr. Uh, Mr. D is looking perplexed.
It says, this city property are want to provide an opportunity, provide for a conditional occupancy, occupancy of the building to obtain financing. But, like, Mayor, your comment a few minutes ago, it's tough to throw somebody out of the home. Well, it's not so tough if your wife's taking a shower and they turn off the water, and we use bottled water to rinse her hair, but. I, I, you know, twice in two days. I, I paid the thirty-five hundred thinking that we were going to resolve this. And obviously it's been postponed, so does that mean? I have to go get a hotel?
Well, let me, uh, Mr. Call, does it specifically say that the home cannot be occupied?
All of the ones that we signed.
I mean, I run this by. I mean, you know, I'm no dummy, I've run this by some attorneys and every one of them has. Five for five, so far, that's occupied, doesn't mean a storage facility, it means you occupy the home. Now, if you want to change that ordinance, that's a duty of attorneys, they all that is agreed, that's right, that's how they make their most, that's right.
So the, the signed agreement says under one D I. Uh, property owner shall complete all building permit punch list items prior to occupying the home.
And that's why I paid the thirty-five hundred dollars, because we were in the process of this city making that decision. And I'm willing, I'm willing to go. In fact, I was told what I needed to do, and that's why I put the thirty-five hundred dollars up there, is to put some dirt. And put some rock, and I'm willing to do that, to meet the code, I, I just, I just need to know, will that meet the code now? Which has been postponed to a later discussion, so we can't tell you at this point in time. But I think that's pretty specific, so council, I guess, as John said.
You want to enforce the agreement as written and signed, or, or what approach do you want to take?
Mayors, as, as we talked earlier, um. In our communications earlier, late last week. Um, I mentioned that we ought not to enforce it until we understand what the ordinance is that we're enforcing. Um, guess there's significant question about the, the ordinance and. A- as I noted, there are, and, um. There, there is a brand new home that's just a couple of doors down. That was given final occupancy, where this specific ordinance, as far as I can tell. Was not correctly applied. Um, with a vertical concrete retaining wall, and, um, I, I don't know how. It just feels arbitrary to me that we're saying in one instance, we'll give you a final occupancy. Sign off on your house. And, um, where in this particular instance, the, I believe a good faith effort is being made and has been made. To, to do what the council will require, as soon as council decides what it's going to require.
Mayor, at this point in time, it's. And I, I hear what you're saying, at this point in time, the ordinance is being enforced based upon an eight-foot wall, right? I think that was the condition on which the building permit was issued. And I fully understand what you're saying. Thing that concerns me here, and this is really difficult, because we've got a, a good citizen there who's anxious to move into their home. But we have an agreement that was signed that said the house would not be occupied. So we could surely override that. Uh, according to Mr. Call. But it, it concerns me when somebody signs an agreement. This, you know, obviously it can be disputed whether it's clear or not, that particular item is clear, the house won't be occupied. So those are the two issues I think the council needs to wrestle with. But we do need to make a decision for Mr. D this evening, so that he's not left. Hanging out there, uh. Not knowing what to do with his new home. I think John, on previous ones, my recollection is there was also a timeframe on which the issue had to be resolved.
Uh, it's sixty days, if I remember right, Mayor.
That's correct. Okay, Mr. Uh, Swanson, council member Swanson.
For me, the trouble is this. Uh, the, the agreement was signed, but as we've dug into the agreement, we're finding issues. That nobody was aware of to begin with. And for me, the biggest issue is that, um, the ordinance as it's written. Wasn't followed two doors down, and final occupancy was given. And now that we're trying to clarify that as a council, I, I. Uh, I, I'll just make it short, I'm okay with continued occupancy of the home until council gets this straightened out. So that Mr. D knows exactly what it is that he's going, going to be required to do.
I appreciate your opinion, I would say, two wrongs don't make a right.
No, I completely understand that.
All right, I'm not, I'm not disputing, I'm just saying that. I, I'm not against the motion that's potentially being proposed here. I'm just saying the basis on which it is proposed, I have a little bit of disagreement with. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't move that way, Mr. Call?
Counsel, I, I don't think you're gonna offend anybody by letting the D, the D stay in the home, I. You're not, you're not gonna hurt my feelings, it's, it's a city agreement.
Well, John, do you think we make a decision?
No, I do not, but the only thing, and I, I will say my feelings are getting hurt a little bit, I have put my tape measure on that wall. And the co- exposed concrete was ninety-six inches, and then the dirt behind the wall was a few inches lower, so. It, it did comply, uh, what the downhill neighbor did is they landscaped, whether or not that complied or not, I don't know the answer to that, but. My impression is that wall met the code when it was constructed.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion here, uh, council members, somebody like to make a motion to help Mr. D out, uh.
W- one more comment? Oh, so I, I think we just motioned, or we just said we don't want to do temporary occupancy agreements moving forward. This is a very, uh, extreme situation and pretty unique. So I would be okay, uh, you know, making a motion or seconding a motion that allows the Ds to reside in their home as is. Um, knowing that essentially we, in theory, should not run into this again, because temporary occup- occupancy or agreements. Will not exist moving forward. So that's kind of where I'm at.
And I would say that, uh, in conjunction with that. That occupancy we grant based upon the fact that this, whatever is decided by the council, the motion. Is resolved within some set time period. With the full understanding that it's not. Then the home cannot be occupied. Okay, so, uh, someone have a motion here?
Uh, Mayor, I move that we override the temporary occupancy concern with the Ds and permit them to move in to their home.
Was that clear enough? How about the timeframe of, uh, feeling the issue resolved? Because what you just granted was a waiver of that occupancy, no matter what. I know you liked it, but. Uh, I'm not the, uh, you know. I just want it to be fair for the Ds, and I want it to be fair for the city, personally myself, I think this, uh, ordinance is. Cause more grief than it has anything, so I agree with.
Sixty days from the time council decides.
So you want me to add that?
I think that's what Mayor is asking for.
That's what I'm saying is that, once the decision is made. Has to be resolved the next period of time, whenever that is, if not, it'll be made very clearly that the home cannot be occupied. So, I would propose that we. Override the temporary occupancy agreement and permit the Ds to move into their home, knowing that. Within sixty days from a decision rendered by the city council on this ordinance, any issues will be totally resolved. And if not?
And if not.
Occupancy will be halted.
Occupancy will be halted.
Thank you, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
And we have a second, further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Keep the lawn mowed up there, will you?
I haven't any lawn, I'm mowed for a long time.
Day sixty-one, it needs to be completed.
Is there any, is there any other, uh, public comments, uh, online or for those who are in the tablets this evening?
I'll keep it quick, I just, uh, wanted to say how proud I am to, to live in the city and have you guys, uh. Um, working here, I just, uh, just been a month and a half, I think, been working with, uh, a lot of you, and I just, uh, very proud. And so I appreciate all you guys do, it's, it's not fun, you've been working through a lot of issues that impact a lot of different people, and I just appreciate it, and. Uh, the fairness is above board, I mean, I just, I'm surprised, so, not surprised, appreciate it, sorry.
Thank you, Chris.
Friend of Ashdale, I live in North Platon, every time we come to these meetings, I say, I'm not gonna say anything, she kind of brings something up. So I'm curious with the. Uh, John is the city attorney, but we also have a city prosecutor? I thought that was John's job, no?
No.
Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, uh, John deals as our city manager and attorney, uh, from his manager standpoint, he's responsible. For day-to-day operation in the city, I kind of classify as the chief operating officer of the city. Uh, he also, uh, consults with the council regarding issues the city faces. Um, legally, city, the prosecutor actually works in the court and prosecutes offenses, uh. Whether they're misdemeanors or, uh, criminal, he, he is the one that. Uh, represents the city and enforcing the law. Um, so that is generally not, in our case, the city attorney's responsibility. He did not prosecute, uh, misdemeanors in the court, of course.
So he, because he's an attorney, he can make sure that the ordinance is written legally for the state and city, is that? Different branch of law, I mean, it's, he's more a contract attorney, and then you've got, um, sort of. The criminal justice system, or you've got prosecutors and defenders and, you know, your parimates and that, so that's, that's what kind of. There's different branches, just like in medicine, there's different branches of law.
Brandon has, uh, handles a judicial kind of branch of things, uh, yes, we do rely on John. Uh, to make sure our ordinance are, uh, enforceable, constitutionally correct. And gives us advice, uh. Uh, for instance, you know, he would advise if the city were being sued, he may say, hey, I can handle this, or this is complex, we need to turn it over to the insurance or get. You know, outside counsel, but that's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. John, is there anyone online that would like to comment?
Uh, no, no raised hands.
Is there anyone else here that would like to comment? All right, I don't see anyone, so we'll pause public comments. And we'll move on to, uh, comments, uh, from the council, is there any comments, council, uh? Um, citizens that need to be brought to our attention, are you now? I'm not seeing any there, staff comments. I see no.
Yeah, I, I did have one.
I'm sorry. I passed your turn. Uh, but, uh, because I'm a compassionate mayor, I, I have comments.
Uh, only in public. No, I, I just, it, it, John, if I misstated on that wall, I'll visit with you afterwards, but. Uh, the, after the discussion tonight, with. Uh, the after the discussion tonight with the, you know, the setback and and all of that, it just doesn't seem to fit and. Anyway, sorry if I hurt your feelings.
You're good.
Mayor, I, that's all I. Council member, so. It was my fault I had uh, councilman Swanson occupied, but I do have a couple of things I want to mention here, just quickly. So um, I had a citizen call me today, yesterday, talked to Dave uh, today about this, John. Apparently um, this last Saturday over at Oakland Park. There was, uh, apparently the handicapped stalls are not clearly marked. And so there was um, there was no handicap stalls available. And there was a a grandfather that was there to see the game, who's in a wheelchair. And I guess, I'm just going by what they said, they apparently knew the person who parked in one of the handicap stalls. Went to ask her to move it, she wouldn't move it. So we just wanna make sure that the handicap, handicap signs are a little bit more clear there. Okay, so if you could just follow up with Dave on that. And then um, I had a citizen also approached me about a one hundred thousand dollar survey of the businesses that were supposed to be done in. North Austin.
I think they're talking about the survey down at the North Austin Plaza, but it was, the grant money was received from W F R C. Um, Scott, I don't think we've seen anything yet, have we, Scott?
They're out for RFP, we're waiting to respond.
And it's just for, right, right, I just knew it was a business survey, but is it just for that location, just for?
That area, I think downtown, but primarily that, believe it. No. Yeah, this is not a a survey of the businesses, this is hiring a. Verb to give us recommendations, as you know, we've got RDA money that's. Sitting out there, we need to bank determinations on, so it's actually not a survey, but we have received a grant. Uh, to give recommendations on what we can do with that part of the city.
Okay, and then just last but not least, how do we? I'm councilman Swanson mi- mentioned, um, how do we, how do we have an issue with Brad D's situation? And yet just a couple of houses down, we don't?
Well, cause John says uh, there's not, it's not an issue.
And so I measured the wall and it complied.
So Brandy's wall was always in compliance.
This is the one, the one that was.
Okay, okay. I'm kind of confused about this one, but it's okay, that's what I'm curious about. Thank you for the comments. Uh, anything else? Council, just as a reminder, I know we all get uh, emails of concern with citizens, I receive them. Uh, I would just remind that we've asked those to all clear through John, so that we can make sure there's a response. Um, I know in my instance, I thank the president for their comments, I forwarded those to John. And then I'm relying on John to uh, to get back to the citizens and then importantly, council. Uh, how that issue was resolved, and John knows that if he's struggling with. Um, resolving that, the council, then he will come to the council and give input. So I think it just keeps us very organized that, John, uh, I think you received the email there with three, three issues. The last of being uh, kind of the toughest of how you put a speed bump in a location, but uh, that's kind of just for the. Um, information for the citizens, the public, that that's kind of how we're trying to to make sure we're consistent. The the application and uh, if for some reason, John is really good at this, but he's 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 human, and for some reason. You don't get a response from him in a timely manner, uh, you're more than welcome to call the mayor. Council member and uh, have a slide of firing under John. Mr. Call, did you have something else you'd like to add this evening?
I just wanted, so I did get that email from uh, about the street light, uh, and I'll, I will follow up with you on that. And then just as a follow-up from previous one, I believe Dr. Shook is all taken care of, uh, Eric is working and they gotten everything finalized over there. Although, there was a a utility issue on the property that we're looking through, and we're not sure if it's related to the construction or what's happened there, but just so you know. And then one other thing, we did actually receive a lawsuit um, from an individual who injured themselves in one of the storm drains or the gutters on the city. Uh, and that is being handled by the insurance company. Um, and so we're not sure where, how that will turn out, but they, our insurance company yesterday filed a motion to dismiss. Uh, based on a claim of government immunity for storm drains, so. Uh, just so you're aware, if you hear any word of that, you know, obviously we don't want people hurting or getting hurt on our streets or in the gutters or things, but. There's a certain point that um, the city doesn't have a liability for things, because it's. Um, there's only so much you can do to make things as safe as you can make them, so.
All right, and just a reminder to the public and to the uh, council, we have in place now. Uh, a citizen community, a committee, excuse me, to handle cherry days. Um, I've written about that in the Connection Magazine article, so the public can see that. Uh, they will be making recommendations back to the council in regards to where the parade will be held. Uh, what day is you, as you know, we've turned this back to a community event. Uh, for its intended purpose, which was to celebrate this cherry harvest. Uh, just a reminder, it somehow turned into a Fourth of July celebration, which I'm sure you're not adverse to having, but. Uh, I think we'll see it go back to its original intent, which is to celebrate the. Uh, cherry harvest, so you could see some changes, but we'll, we'll see what the committee goes back with. That committee will be uh, chaired this year by uh, Lynn and Terry Beck's out. Uh, assisted as almost co-chairs, uh, is uh, Spencer and May Stevens and Alan.
Krebs.
Krebs and Melanie Duane. And they will be seeking uh, community health and volunteers to participate. So just wanted to remind the council of that. All right, uh, I have nothing else, and if you have nothing else, uh, I'd see you get motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, uh, council member Exton, second to that motion, second, thank you.